I don't see anything on here for that. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any input on the discussion? Jackie?
The only thing I have to say is this is excellent. We needed this for a long time. Planning to -- failing to plan is planning to fail. So I think having something that we could at least have a map or have something that we know is going to be on years to come that they can plan for today, excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. And I commend the department heads for working on this with the planning commission.
Tracy?
Doug, would we see the next year's update about this time of year, next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, a little sooner.
Anyone else? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Oh, one last question. Can I have this electronically?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you have what?
Have a copy of this electronically.
Yeah, we'll get it set up for the website if that's what you like.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto our next agenda item. We kind of bounced around. We've already taken care of zero, so we'll move right on to number one, which is the auditor and investment representatives. Kathy?
This evening, we have with us Emily Jones from Multibank. She is our account executive. We also have John Pfeffer, our auditor, and Chris from his office. I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name.
Arsenal.
Arsenal?
Yep.
And Rick Jaeger, our controller. My suggestion is that Emily will make a little presentation on what Multibank is and does and about our portfolio, Township Investments, and then we will have the board ask questions. They can either ask them of the auditor or the controller or Emily. Kind of generally, maybe you can take turns or direct the question at who you think can answer it best, or maybe someone can pipe up who can answer it best.
Great, thank you.
Emily, thanks for coming. She's come a long way. Thanks for being here.
Hi, and thank you for having me. I was asked to come here to introduce myself. I know there's some new faces. I have been working with the township for a little bit over, well, probably two and a half years. And basically, I'm an account executive. I provide a place to buy and sell fixed income. As all of you know, you're very conservative investors, and the state, as well as your investment policy dictates what you can and cannot invest in. So Multibank is headquartered here in Michigan. They've been in business since 1988. They only sell and buy fixed income. We are one of the largest underwriters for CDs in the state of Michigan. As you know, you can only buy CDs that are headquartered here in Michigan or have a branch, so that's convenient. We also underwrite government agency bonds for Federal Home Loan Bank and Fannie Mae. And those are very conservative, safe investments, AAA/AA, or in some cases AAA, both by Moody's and S&amp;P. There has been some concern raised to me about the duration and the length of the portfolio as far as maturities, and it was suggested to take some of the, you know, proceeds that are coming due and reinvest those in some shorter terms to kind of fill in the ladder, if you will, so that things are coming due as they're needed. And I know that Howard has some good input and, you know, plans to be the point of contact as well as Kathy. So basically, they're going to deliver your wishes to me and hopefully can execute those for you. Just really quick, I don't know if you were given this report, but this can be produced monthly or quarterly, however you'd like. There's really not too much change on a month-to-month basis as far as buying and selling investments. Interest payment's always coming in monthly, but that shows up on your statement. So as far as changes in maturity and size and so forth, that doesn't change too much on a monthly basis, so this report would be great quarterly, but it is available monthly. By the way, we don't charge any fees or commissions. We're not a money manager. I can't make a decision without the designated investment officer from the township approving that. So I just wanted to get that clear and out there. We don't charge a fee for this report. We don't charge a fee for safekeeping, which is held through Pershing. It's a custodian, and it's held in the name of the township and, you know, separate from the custodian's assets that's segregated. It's the safest way, the most recommended way to safekeep your securities. I have a report here just summarizing. If anyone wants this report, I would be happy to pass my card so you have my email address directly, or you could get it from Kathy. I know she does have it. And just really quickly, on average, the par amount of the entire portfolio, now this is combining the sewer fund, the MIF, which I believe is general, as well as the library fund. The positions, there aren't very many to do them separately. You can do that. However, the report would have some holes in it just because there's so few positions. So we decided to do it as a whole, and that's what these funds are including. And the par value, if you were to hold to maturity, would be 2.8 million roughly. And then the annual income from that is roughly 66,000. Now, that's average on the portfolio whole. And then average quality, the largest percentage is AAA. There is one municipal investment that's short-term. It's coming due in September of this year. It has a 5 percent coupon. That is triple B plus. Still investment grade, still permissible. However, if anyone has concerns about that and would like to change your policy or not invest in anything besides AAA or AA or treasuries even for that matter, of course, you know, that would be communicated with the investment officer, and they could share that with me, and they would not, you know, I just wouldn't show those types of investments. I only want to show you what you can buy and what you want to buy, more importantly. So if there's any questions on the report or the statements on how to read a bond, anything, please don't hesitate to ask. You can do that. But phone call right here, right now, or email. It's entirely up to you.
Wayne?
Well, I don't like to hear about Freddie Mac notes. I don't like to hear about Freddie Mac or Fannie Mae. They've had a lot of problems. And we all know that AAA didn't mean much when we had the meltdown in '07, so some of the stuff you're talking about, I don't have a lot of faith in. So who in this township, maybe I should ask them, is making the decision on how much money and where the money's going? You didn't make that decision. Who in this township is making that decision?
Well, it was previously Kathy's predecessor who, you know, had to leave.
Previously what?
It was the previous treasurer who had to leave, and she designated Rick, and now it's going to be Kathy and Howard.
Okay. So they're responsible for the money.
I believe.
And hopefully, we've, there's no interest to be made in the bank, but it's pretty safe. Thank you.
Let me just, if I may, to the board, let me just clarify that just briefly. You know, while it's going to be Kathy and my responsibility.
While what?
While it will be Kathy and my responsibility to administer and deal with the, you know, some day-to-day, month-to-month decisions, ultimately, the investments, I believe, will be, still be a board choice. And we want, both of us want the board to understand, number one, what we're invested in, and number two, to collectively create a policy as to what you want to see moving forward. So Wayne, as you indicated, you're not comfortable with Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac notes. So one thing we want to do is, number one, and I think what we really ought to do tonight is maybe go into a little bit more detail as to what the bonds are, because when people hear Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac notes, they don't, let's explain what the details of those investments are. Number one, let's talk about maybe a little bit of, you know, positives and negatives. You know, there is, obviously, there's some real strong value to those bonds, and what are, you know, the potential risks, so the board understands that. And then two, Wayne, and it probably won't happen tonight, but moving forward, that we need to, as a board, decide what our position is moving forward. And we'll work as a board to do that, and then Kathy and I will direct the investments from that point forward.
Well, I've got a problem with that, because Kathy is, as Rand, she's on the board, she's responsible to the taxpayer. You are not an elected person.
I agree.
And I don't like to see, just for me personally, I'd like to see one person that's, I'd like to see, I mean, whoever it's going to be, which I would imagine is Kathy, I'd like to see her as one person who's responsible, because if something happens, somebody's got to hold the bag here, and I don't like to see two or three people.
Fair enough.
Doing it. So I don't know how she feels about this, but.
Well, let's.
If she's ready for it, and I know we're all, this board's newly elected, but.
Let's put that discussion off for another meeting, and let's put the discussion, and we're going to have the discussion again as to what the vision is of the board in terms of investments. But let me direct a question to Emily for a moment.
I would like you to explain a little bit more about the investments, particularly
the Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac notes and what those are.
Yes. As you mentioned, there was some trouble financially with Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. What happened was the government came in, as they've always said they would do, and took over those two agencies. They own 80 percent of those two agencies. So in a sense, you know, they weren't 100 percent owned by the government then, but now they're 80 percent owned by the government. Now, treasury is 100 percent direct obligation of the US government. You can look at Fannie and Freddie at this point as 80 percent, 100 percent, because they have announced that since they've been in conservatorship, no matter what they do to unwind them and get them off of their books and not have them under conservatorship anymore, they will honor their debt. The White House has issued a document stating that. Now, if you find that credible, you know, that everyone might feel different, you know, if that's credible or not, but it is the US government, and treasuries are considered the safest investment, and with being limited as to what you can and cannot invest in, I mean, that's, it's just simple, safe credit qualities. So it's, did I answer your question? I'm sure you're not fully, everyone's, you know.
Emily?
I guess I'll go along with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Emily, can you please explain what the bonds are? Explain how the bonds work from an interest perspective.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And what the bonds are.
Okay, there's some different coupon structures that are formed. Most of them are callable, and they can either be a fixed-rate coupon that pays usually semi-annual. Those can be quarterly at times. It can be at maturity at times. But generally speaking, they pay semi-annual interest. And with a fixed coupon, it could be 1 percent, 2 percent, that never changes. Now, there's another type of bond that protects you against rising interest rates. So everyone's fear at this point, because we're at such low interest rates, is when they go up. So you don't want to be stuck in something that's a fixed rate when, you know, let's say five years, three years from now, you're paying, they're paying, you know, 2 or 3 percent more, and you're stuck with this crummy 1 percent from back when we were in, you know, a low-interest-rate environment. With the step-up bonds, it's an agency bond, it's callable, but there's a scheduled coupon where the bond will start to step up if it's not called. So for example, let me just pull this out.
What is the bond rate?
Uh, just.
I mean, you can get about 3 quarters of a point in the bank. I mean, what the hell? Maybe we should just have the money in the bank. We don't have to worry about it.
This one starts at 2 and 1/2 percent, and then it steps up. Sorry, I have a lot of information in front of me. This one, okay, this particular one, there is one that starts at 2 and 1/2 percent and then steps up. This particular one that I have an example of, and you're happy to have it as soon as I'm done with it, it starts off at 2 and 1/4 percent, okay? And then that pays until January of '18. Now, this bond could be called back by the issuer prior to them. So if interest rates are, have fallen, which they have since this was purchased slightly, this could be called by the issuer, and you will not receive that 2 and 1/4 percent anymore. You will receive all of your principal back and be faced with reinvesting at lower rates. If they continue to go up, this steps up to 2.375, 2 and 1/2, all the way up to 12 percent. There are some agency bonds that are shorter terms but have the same concept. They start at, you know, 1 percent, 2 percent, 3 percent. They move up if they're not called. Some of them step as high as 12, like in this example, 8 percent, 9 percent, 6 percent. So that way, your bond is changing.
Are bonds paying 8 or 9 percent?
Not currently. This has the potential to pay that interest payment if it's not called back by the issuer.
So let me just clarify to the board. So here's the way these bonds work. As Emily indicated, they're Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac step-up medium-term notes, basically. And essentially, if the interest rate, if the current interest rate is lower than the interest rate that you're making on the bond, the federal government or Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac will call the bond. They would rather loan, they would rather loan other people, or, excuse me, yeah, they would rather take back that investment so they don't have to continuously pay the 2 percent on it if they are able to. When the interest rates rise above the interest rate that you're receiving on the bond, the bond won't be called. So there's an advantage side and there's a risk side. The advantage side of the bonds are, you know, they, as Emily said, they do have the backing of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. The disadvantage comes in a liquidity standpoint when interest rates rise above the interest rate that you're getting today. So for example, if the interest rate on the bond was 2.25 percent, all of a sudden, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac can go ahead and loan money to you or the rest of us at 4 percent or 5 percent. They'd rather loan money to you or I at 4 or 5 percent, so they're not going to call that bond. And at that point, it's difficult to sell that bond on the market for par. Now, what happens is you can make the argument, well, the interest rate that you've made up until that point, you get, you know, you can sort of add that all up, and it might all end up being par. The concern is interest rates rise, and we have either liquidity issue or we have a concern of the investment themselves. So while it's a very safe investment, while it's a protected investment, those are some of the concerns.
Interest rates are as low as I ever seen them in my life.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're not getting much on interest, I don't worry. And if there's any kind of liability at all, I don't, take the money out, put it in the bank. I mean, you're not getting any interest anyway to speak of. That's all I got to say about it. Thank you. But I still say that I believe that one person, Kathy has voted in, she's responsible for the money in the township, not you. So I believe that if she understands it and wants to do it on her own, or with help from whoever, you or Rick or whoever, then that's fine. What do you intend to do, Kathy? Don't you want to say?
I want all the board's input. I want us all to understand what's going on. That's the main thing, that everybody understands what we're doing.
I don't think everybody's going to understand.
And personally, no risk.
Everything about your job.
That's my personal opinion, no risk. Very, very conservative.
Okay, I go along with that. That's what I want to hear. Thank you very much.
I'm open to that.
No risk. You're not going to get anything anyway.
Does anyone have anything else for Emily, or do we want to move on to our next speaker? All right. Who's coming next? Is it? Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for having us here tonight, and I would like to mention that we've had an opportunity to start working with Kathy and Howard, and they're definitely engaged in everything that's going on, and it's really good from the auditor standpoint that they're so involved at this early point. This kind of goes back to our prior, when we gave our audit report. And basically, when we came to the board table, we mentioned that we had concerns about your investment policy, making sure everybody understood the investment policy, and then going from there to instruct whoever you had doing your investing to follow that policy. And again, you know, Kathy is new to the office. She's willing to, you know, get engaged in that whole process. What Chris is going to go over right now is what we found in your investment policy, and we want to kind of elaborate on that.
This is on your report that you gave us at the last annual?
Yes.
Yeah.
So earlier today, John just asked me to take a look at your investment policy.
I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry.
Pick that.
Earlier today, John asked me to take a look at your investment policy and compare it to some of the investments that were made, and just have some general comments on it. It's just important to keep in mind that there's a Public Act 20 in 1943 that is the governing statute on what you can invest in, and that's the, you know, that's the statute. But that doesn't preclude the board from making more restrictive, more restrictive standards on what you can invest in. So if it's in Public Act 20, it doesn't mean you can't outlaw it from certain things that are in there as far as internally. So when we were comparing some of the things in Public Act 20 to your investment policy, we noticed that that was done in the last, in the last revision of the investment policy. So we just want to make sure that the investment policy is the governing document that's being used and not Public Act 20 as the decision-making authority, because that, your investment policy, from what we understand, is more restrictive than Public Act 20. There's just one other thing I just want to just elaborate on, and Mr. Fink said it. There's two different risks that we're looking at here. There's counterparty risk, which is the risk that the person on the other side of the transaction, Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, can't pay. I don't think that that's a big risk or anybody's concerned about that. I think the big risk is the interest rate risk. And in three or four years, if interest rates go up and you're still holding this bond that's paying a lower percent, the market values of those bonds can decrease. I mean, we're not talking about 1 or 2 percent. I mean, we're talking 10, 15, 20 percent, depending on what the terms are. And it's just important that that's managed. And that's, that was all that, you know, our points were, is that, you know, that thing, that that's being managed and being adhered to, and everybody's on the same page with that.
And I get, you know, again, we're not, we're not the investment specialists like Emily is. You know, we're just the independent auditors that are, again, looking out for the township the best that we can. And even when you heard the explanation about those bonds, if you, if you listen to that, again, you know, from an investment standpoint, that might be good in some cases, but just listen to how complicated that explanation was, even from Howard trying to understand those kinds of investments. Is that really what the township wants? And I just, what we just say as auditors is you need to get involved in that investment policy, instruct, you know, whoever you're dealing with as far as your investments of how you want to have your monies invested, and make sure they're done that way. Because again, you know, we feel like, you know, if you don't understand it, you shouldn't be in it. So again, you know, this is just a follow-up to our audit report that we gave, and we just wanted to mention that tonight.
No, but I want to thank them for coming, because they are, I had on here to ask, their auditors are not investment people, but they put quite a few things in their report when we get our audit, and they alert us to certain things that we need to, we're looking at, I suppose. So, and they may have certain ideas, but they're auditors, they're not investors.
That's right.
What do you think of our investment policy as it stands right now?
Well, actually, your investment policy is stricter than the public act.
Mm-hmm.
And again, there are some good things in it because of that. One of the items is that if you look at that investment policy, we believe it says that you're not supposed to invest in other municipalities in Michigan. And again, if you look at your investments, it appears that you have. So, you know, those are the kinds of things we want you to get engaged in, because yours is actually stricter.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
I was going to say, as many townships are, as many.
That's right.
That's not unusual to have a stricter policy.
Exactly, that's correct.
Than what's allowed by law.
Exactly.
Is our policy, I can't find, what about like these triple B plus? I mean, I don't see that actually mentioned.
Well, again, they are, triple B is allowed, and triple B is allowed as an investment, but your policy is stricter than the state. And again, we're not, we're not, you know, the experts, but we believe that that is saying that you can't, your policy that you can't be investing in other municipalities, which we believe you have with the Wayne County bonds. So if you look at your actual investment policy, we do, we did see that in there. So again, we just want you to, you know, go back to your investment policy, and we just understand what you're investing in. Again, you know, we're not saying that, you know, that your investments are not good investments at all. We're just saying that you have to be engaged in this yourself and understand it. And again, you have a new treasurer. Kathy's been trying to get involved. Howard has been involved in it too, which is good, and this is a good thing. And we had mentioned it back when we gave our audit report. And again, I'll come back to, we're not the experts on your investments either, so.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
You mentioned about the ratings and the triple B and such. So those generally just apply to whether that other side of the transaction, the person you're lending or the entity you're lending to can repay or has the ability to repay on the terms you've agreed to. That doesn't indicate at all whether the value of that actual investment will go up or down or sideways. So just so we're on that same page, because if interest rates do go up significantly and you're locked in one of these bonds and you don't get rid of it in the, you know, time before that, then market values of those things can go down. Okay?
All right. Anyone else? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is Rick speaking tonight?
Does anybody have any questions for Rick?
Yeah. I'm sorry, what? Okay. Okay, great.
Madam Supervisor? One of the things that I'd like the board to just consider is whether or not you guys would like us to look at as an independent financial advisor or advisory firm to take a look at the investment portfolio. The auditors are great there, they're not at financial advisors. The investment, Emily is a broker. She's not allowed to advise. Rick's great. I can help, but none of us are qualified to make an investment portfolio decision. And this actually relates back to our previous conversation about capital improvements and how liquid our investments need to be moving forward. So I throw that out there. If the board would like that, we can arrange for that.
I think that's a great idea. I don't think it would hurt to have a couple of people look at it just so you can get some kind of consistency with opinions.
Okay. There might be a small cost to that on an official basis, and I can keep the board appraised on what that cost is.
I think it'd be well worth it just to see, where do we stand? Where should we be going?
Absolutely.
None of us are professionals in this area.
And I don't think, I don't think there's the institutional history. I mean, I don't think any of us know how we got to the point where we're at. And I'm not saying we're in a bad spot, because I don't know if we're in a good spot, a bad spot, a risky spot. I doubt if we're in a risky spot as we would traditionally define risk as, oh my gosh, the bottom has fallen out and we've lost a whole big pile of money. But none of us know how we got to where we're at.
Right.
And without that knowledge, I don't, I don't know how we can get to the point. And without that knowledge, I don't know how we can get to the point without some outside help. So yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
All right. There either be a report on that at the next board meeting, or some motions, or some action items at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Howard. By the way, you can just call me Emily. Under our next item, what are we?
We are on number two.
Okay, good results for the wastewater treatment plant culvert. Howard, that has your name on it.
Well, actually, this is a Tim project. I'm going to let Tim take the lead on this. Our engineer's here to present. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to just go ahead and read the letter, if I may. On May 2nd, 2013, contractor bids were received for the replacement of the Horseshoe Lake drain culvert at the wastewater treatment plant. Six firms.
Where are you? Oh, okay, yeah, all right. I'm with you. You're reading this letter.
Okay.
Is that what you're doing?
I can't see that far.
Yeah, okay.
Got the wrong glasses on. Six firms submitted bids, and the results are summarized on the attached tabulation. The lowest responsive bidder was Joe Reika Excavating Incorporated out of Folerville with a bid of $117,525. Tetra Tech, our engineering firm, has had previous successful experience working with this contractor, and they also checked his references that are listed in the bid. Tetra Tech recommends that Norfield Township accept the bid submitted by Joe Reika Excavating Incorporated for $117,525. This project is a complex underground project with a contractor paid by unit costs of work completed. There may be unforeseen conditions that could occur that may require additional work items or additional quantities of projected work. The work will likely be completed within one calendar week, requiring any necessary changes to the contract being made quickly and negotiated and approved quickly. Therefore, Tetra Tech also suggests that the Norfield Township Board of Trustees authorize the township manager to approve contract changes should they be necessary. So the additional sheets show you the bids from each one of the firms that submitted, and you have the results of those.
You left out a part where it says the construction cost could be lower, too.
I apologize for that.
Shelley, did you have something?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any other thoughts? All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the lowest bid from Joe Reika Excavating Inc. of Folerville with a bid of $117,525 for the wastewater treatment plant culvert repair.
I support.
And have the township manager, and have the township manager go up to 100.
Let me redo that.
Okay.
Sorry, Lisa. I'd like to make a motion to accept the lowest bid from Joe Reika Excavating of Folerville with a bid of $117,525. This would also include approving, authorizing the township manager to approve contract changes up to a total contract value of $125,000.
I support. Many motion, others supported. Any discussion? I'm sorry. I thought you were going to say something. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Under the next item?
It could be less, too.
Number three. 2013-2014 budgets.
I always, I feel like the proper term is madam supervisor.
Well, whatever you're comfortable with. Everyone's fine.
Again, just real quick, Bill and I went over the budget. We're comfortable with it. This is not my presentation. This is Rick's presentation, but I didn't want to indicate that Bill and I both have looked over all the budgets. We're comfortable with the changes, and I'll let Rick take it over.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, basically, it's an opportunity to review the budget that we have put together for the 1314 fiscal year. Obviously, this is not a final document. This is just a work in progress right now, even though we have numbers in all the places that need to be, and we feel comfortable that these are good numbers that are there. But you also have the opportunity to make changes, add, delete, whatever you feel is necessary. So basically, what we're going to do here tonight is we've got a number of different budgets to go through. I did hand out this information. It was in the board packet. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to read through it all. There's quite a bit there. But basically, we are going to be going through the general fund, the DDA, the building department, building authority debt fund, the PSB debt fund, wastewater treatment plant, Seven Mile Sewer, Horseshoe Lake Sewer, and North Territorial Sewer tonight. I know it sounds like a huge list. Probably the bulk of our time is going to be spent with the general fund and probably wastewater treatment plant. All the other ones are very small funds, can be explained pretty quickly. So basically, to start things off here, probably just want to hit the highlights. I mean, I don't know if you guys want to go through line by line by line. We could be here for a while doing that. The summary that I did put together, the narrative that you received, that pretty much lays out the major increases or decreases to this budget. So I figured we'd probably spend most of our time doing that and just kind of hitting on those items and either getting some nods as yes or no comments or whatever the case may be. So basically, starting out here as a summary, the general fund is going to be showing revenues at 1.4 million. That's an increase of about $181,000 or 14.7%. Expenditures are going to be roughly 1.3 million, and that's also an increase of $116,000 or 9.6%. But what net of all that's going to do is it's going to basically put it, it's a surplus budget, and we're going to be adding about $81,000 to fund balance.
I'm having trouble finding out where you're at here.
Page one of the narrative.
Huh? The first page?
First page.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Now, getting into some of the actual, the revenues, there really aren't any significant increases or decreases in that area. So we're going to move on to expenditures. And I basically laid them out here by department. The first department is the Township Board. A couple of things have happened there, and these, we'll just run through them real quick here. Life Disability Insurance, Pension, they are all projected to decrease about $1,200.
What page are you on now?
Page two. Top of page two.
Well, there's no pages numbers on me. Which I, I wish we had some page numbers.
Okay, we're on page two.
All right.
At the very top.
Page two.
So basically, the life disability insurance, pension, those were all eliminated with the last board. They eliminated all benefits for trustees. So that's what that savings is there. We have a projected decrease of $2,200 in the miscellaneous fund, and that was basically, we had done a forensic study on the ex-supervisor's computer in a background check for the new township manager, and we don't expect those things to recur in the current budget. Moving on to supervisor, actually supervisor.
When you say trustees, you meant the board?
Yes.
Not the, I mean.
Just the main four trustees in that particular area right there, okay?
We never had any benefits.
Well, you had life insurance and disability insurance, and you were getting some pension at one point. All of those things were eliminated.
Well, I didn't know that. Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. As far as the other three positions, the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, the savings that we're realizing this year is because of last year when the budget was put together, we had five months where they were still earning their full salary. So what you're seeing here is this is basically the savings from those five months that we no longer have to budget for. So that should take care of the supervisor, clerk, and treasury explanations on here. As far as elections go, basically, that is down primarily because we have fewer elections that are planned for 1314 as opposed to 1213. Yes.
The only question I have is that the school board is planning an election. Was that considered in this?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, we didn't initially, but then we found out about it.
Okay.
Yeah, we were able to go back and actually make a couple of changes.
Okay.
And what page is the election?
It's still on page two.
Oh, I got you.
Okay. Moving on to assessing, there was a decent decrease there of $10,000, almost $11,000, and that's primarily due to the fact that the assessor opted out of the township medical plan. So there is no longer a cost there for us. Hall and grounds, a couple of different things happening here. Utilities, primarily what was being tracked there is the utilities at 75 Barker Road. Now that those have been switched over to the tenant, we can actually realize a savings there. And I know we did keep some money in that budget because we know we have to pay for a portion of those utilities. Repairs and maintenance are projected to decrease about $12,007. And again, most of this is coming from repairs that we had to make last year or earlier this fiscal year that we're in to 75 Barker Road that, again, we don't expect to recur in the 1314 budget year. Chargebacks, prior tax years. This is kind of a crapshoot on this one here, because basically what this means is that if anybody's challenging their taxes and they go to the state, and the state makes a judgment in their favor, and it has to do with a past year's taxes, everybody who got benefit from those increased taxes now has to pay that money back. That's what goes on this particular line item, and that's where we keep track of any past year tax judgments against the township. Yes, ma'am.
Which is also the line item where we're going to have to pay a larger amount than I think what you were expecting.
Yes.
So we're going to have to fix that.
Yes. Yeah, especially if that's going to be happening in the next budget year. Okay, all right. Moving on to legal and professional, basically, engineering fees are projected to decrease about $5,000 or 50% due to lack of activity. The only thing that's actually come through there this year is some stormwater permitting to the tune of around $1,300, $1,400 bucks. We're leaving $5,000 in there, so that should be more than enough to cover that permitting for the next year along with anything else that may pop up. Contributions, this is basically money that is paid from the general fund to fire medical rescue. And when Chief Wagner was the interim township manager, he was getting an extra little stipend, I guess, and the general fund was paying that. That's what this $4,300 is. It's no longer going to be necessary. So again, this isn't going to recur in 1314, so it is a recognized savings this particular year. Planning and zoning, again, legal fees coming down about $5,000 or 33%. And I'm attributing it primarily due to settlement of various cases against the township and then less activity overall.
And I'm leaking it.
Roadwork projects, they're projected to decrease $17,500, which is roughly about a 37.6% decrease primarily due to the reduced price on applying brine to our gravel roads. We saved about $7,500. And the elimination of the Joey Road project, which got paid for this particular fiscal year, and that was a $10,000 savings there. In the senior center, we've got the assistant, we moved on to page three, Mr. Tockett.
I got you.
Assistant director's salary is projected to decrease $10,000 because that position has basically been eliminated. And then hospitalization is also projected to decrease about $6,000 due to the fact that our old director was, had a premium that was for a couple rate, and the new director only has a single rate. So that's where the savings is coming from there. Under debt service, we are going to see a decrease in the amount of interest that we're going to be paying on the bond, about almost $9,000. And this has to do with the refinancing that was completed back in, I believe it was August of 2012. Significant increases, we do have some revenue increases here. The cable franchise fees, we've been tracking a little bit better than $80,000 for the last several years. We budgeted $80,000. I actually took it up $3,500 because I feel we're going to actually hit that number. So that's the reason why that's up $3,500. State revenue sharing.
Do they audit? How do we know it's going to go up?
Just based on past trends. I mean, we budgeted $80,000. We've been getting in about $83,000, $84,000.
Okay, so they keep track when they add people on, they pay us more money? Is that it?
You know, I don't know the terms of the contract, so I'm kind of a little bit of a loss there, but.
How do you realize that turn out to be up then?
Again, because it's based on past trends. Plus, we're already tracking higher than we did last year with the last payment that we just got in.
That's what I was going to ask also. How can we go up when nothing changes for the most part?
It's really bringing it more in line with what we have received in past years. It's really all it is. I mean, I'm not really going any higher than what we received in past years. It's bringing it more up to the level of what we have received in past years.
I would think maybe it's new housing or something, you know, I mean, more people?
Well, I was actually thinking that, because if it is based on customer.
Oh, that's what I mean. I didn't know they audited and found out they were underpaying us, or how do we go about that? Thank you.
Although, if I had to have an opinion about it, which of course I never have an opinion, but I would think it'll go down because I think a lot of people are leaving cable, but we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, it's still tracking better than the 80 that we have budgeted already, so.
If I may just add, I apologize for not projecting sooner. I believe it's a percentage of their revenue. And so as their revenue rises, our fees rise as well.
Their revenue what?
If their revenue rises or goes down, our fees go up or down as well. I believe if I'm not mistaken, it's 5%. It's a 5% fee on their revenue.
And Shelley, unfortunately, in the outskirts of Whitmore Lake, in the outlying areas, we don't get DSL at all.
Really?
I was actually thinking more of DISH. People are changing to DISH.
Yeah, but the only way we can get internet services through cable.
Oh, true. Yes.
Well, their prices can go up.
Yeah.
And so, even though they might lose customers.
They are going up every year. Drives me crazy.
Okay, any other questions on that particular revenue item? Okay. Moving on to state revenue sharing, we pulled this information right off the state website. They have a state revenue sharing site that we can go right to, and we can pull up the projections for this current year. And they are actually showing a nice increase, so we put in an extra $35,000. And if you actually look at the budget itself, I actually put a note on here that they're projecting $621,000, and we've only put $610 in the budget. So we're leaving just a little bit there just for a couple of adjustments that the state may make.
And so, Rick, my question is on this, is that what have you done in the past? Have you done, have you projected it this way in the past where?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we constantly go off to the website and look, and then obviously, then I track the quarterly or the semi-monthly payments, not semi-monthly, they come in every two months. And so I track those against the actual report that I get, because the report that I get from the state breaks it down by the payments that we're going to get, so we get six payments throughout the year. And I basically keep track of those and see how we're tracking throughout the year.
All right.
Yeah, so I feel pretty comfortable with the numbers. They're pretty good about, you know, when they put those numbers out there, we pretty much get that amount of money.
Okay.
Okay? Grant income again, it's projected to increase about $134,000. And again, this is, again, if we apply for this grant and get the grant, this is for Phase 2B of the pathway, which is considerably more expensive than the Phase 2 portion of the path. So that's why you're seeing the big increase here. Election reimbursements are projected to increase about $3,500. And that's, again, has to do with this particular election that you were just mentioning from the schools. That is a reimbursable, I believe, election. That's why we have the dollars in here. And the prior year, there were no reimbursable elections, so that's why we're seeing a pure increase of $3,500 here.
There's not going to be, there's not going to be any fire now on this election?
No, I believe that's the next fiscal year, yeah.
Okay, so because the school has to pay for the election unless we're having something on.
They'll pay 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Current property tax collections, this should make everybody happy. We've actually started to see a little bit of increase in our tax values in the township. So we're getting a little bit of a boost here, only to the tune of around $7,000 this year, but it's better than going the other way. Tax administration fees also going up about roughly $2,500 based on the same reasoning.
I don't agree with you on the taxes. I'd like to see taxes go down. Thank you.
Assess value.
There you go. Moving on to expenditures, and again, I have it broken down by department. Township manager, we have salaries are projected to increase, the $47,000. Basically, this whole section here all has to do with our new township manager. And to make a long story short, we had him budgeted for a full year this particular fiscal year. We've actually adjusted that down because we knew he wasn't gonna be starting until late in the year, and then now, obviously, in the 13-14 year, we have to put him back out there 100%. So what you're seeing here is that all of those are basically just those differences, so there's no really sense in going through each and every one of these. On the clerk side, we have deputy salaries are going up slightly, basically to help cover the reduced hours of the clerk. The treasurer salaries are projected to increase about $3,200. There is an increase that has been baked into this of roughly about 8.5% due to the additional duties that that particular person has taken on. Legal, professional?
Rick?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Am I to assume on both the clerk and the treasurer deputy, both deputies for the treasurer and clerk, that they're giving a pay increase?
Yeah.
Or they're just picking up...
There's also pay increases in here.
Okay.
Yeah, I was instructed to add in about a 2.4% increase for all employees.
Except for the deputy treasurer.
Okay. And then for her, it's...
It actually winds up being about 8.5%.
She's getting a 8.5% increase.
Correct.
But that's gonna have to be voted on.
Correct, yeah. We're just putting it in the budget. I was told to put it in there, so it's there.
Okay.
About the assessors.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we basically have it at the same level that it was, because I haven't been told anything different from him.
We don't have a new person.
There isn't any, there wouldn't be a reason to explain it, because it's the same as last year's number. There's no difference.
We don't have a new person in the assessor office.
I know.
Never mind.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We didn't answer that.
Okay. Let's see here, legal, professional, kinda took a stab at this one, because I haven't really heard anything from anybody, but I did increase it around $6,000 in anticipation of outstanding lawsuits against the township, because it looks like we're gonna be running a little short even this year, based on the last numbers that I looked at just about a week or so ago. So I did take it up about $6,000. You guys can override that if you decide that that's not enough or too much, or whatever the case may be, just let me know and we'll adjust it to wherever you want it adjusted to. Streetlights, obviously the cost of electricity is continuing to go up. We keep getting hit every year, we just don't seem to budget enough for electricity on these streetlights and the ornamental lights that are throughout the township here, so I actually took it up $6,000 to make sure that we don't run into that problem again, hopefully in 13-14.
What kind of ornamental lights do we have in this township?
It's, I don't know, the ones that are on Main Street and throughout the township. I'm not sure exactly all the locations. We do have a list of all of them, but I don't know where they are off the top of my head. Yeah, but there are some ornamental ones, and then there's some regular overhead lights. We can get that information for you.
I know we got the streetlights, but I didn't know we had any ornamental lights.
Yeah, well, that's what they call them, at least. Detroit Edison calls them that.
I was talking about red lights, stoplights. Okay.
Roadwork, again, this has to do with the grant expense. This is just the expense side of the grant monies that we would receive in, so it's basically the same amount as the grant revenue that we were to get in. Township contingency, this was just, we had a talk, Bill Howard and I, and we decided to put in $10,000. This is a contingency, and this could help basically cover some small budget overruns, just so we don't have to constantly come back to the board and ask them for 50 bucks here or 100 bucks there, whatever the case may be. This will help us kinda help manage things a little bit better. Capital outlay, a couple of things going on here. Computer expenses projected to increase about $13,000, and that's due to upgrading to BSNA's .net program. This has not been presented to you guys, but it is, it definitely is something that the township seriously needs to think about. The county has already switched to this platform. A number of different townships within the county have already switched over to it. We can get roughly, I think it's a 10% discount, which is the county's discount that they got, and BSNA is willing to extend that to us, and they are also, BSNA is also willing to let us pay for this over three years. It's roughly about a $35,000 investment, a little bit better than $10,000 a year, so I've got that in the budget this year. Again, it still has to be voted on, so nothing's concrete at this point.
And clarification, this is the accounting program.
It's all accounting programs. This would be the general ledger, this would be payroll, this would be, you know, accounts payable, cash receipts, taxes, it's every program that we have, that's BSNA.
It's really important to, because we're falling behind, we don't match up, we have to actually put it on the flash drive now, drive it down there, we can't, we can't tolerate what time.
It would definitely be, I mean, I use it over at the other township that I work at, and it's a way better system than the pervasive that we're currently using.
I just wanted it out there that this was in accounting, so the...
It's all accounting related, obviously. It's all about the numbers, really. But it also goes into assessing too, and I mean, it's from what I understand, the assessing side of this is really, really good compared to what they have now.
Good.
So...
New BSNA?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I just asked them what it was.
Yeah, what exactly it was.
Record, so people know that it's just not BSNA.
The other thing that's in here in the capital outlay line is we put in $10,000 for a new server. Our server is pretty old, it's outdated, and more than likely, we're gonna need a new server to handle the .net program from BSNA anyway, so we put $10,000 in there for that as well. Then offsetting that is we have some video streaming equipment that was purchased in this year, 12-13, that we don't expect to recur in 13-14. Any questions on the general fund, because that pretty much wraps that one up at this point?
How do you think it looks?
I think it looks really good. I mean, I was actually pleasantly surprised when I first got through, the first blush basically had all numbers in, and we actually had like over $100,000 that was a surplus. And then because of that $100,000 gave us a little bit more comfort, so we were able to add a few more expenses in here, taking it down to, I think, the 81 that we're at right now.
Okay, thank you.
On the contingency, township contingency, we never had like a backup fund before?
You know, the old supervisor, she did put one in there for, I think, one or two years, and then this past year, the one that we're in right now, 12-13, it was pulled out, yeah. So this is basically just putting it back in again.
Rick, I have one more question.
Sure.
Just going back to the township manager. The clerical salary that we're adding 100%, that's putting in administrative assistant?
That is correct.
Okay.
Could you, if you were talking into the mic?
I kinda skipped over that.
No, I just wanted to validate that that's what it was.
Jackie, were you talking into the mic? I didn't...
I was asking Howard that on the township manager, there's a clerical salary projected to increase, the addition of an administrative assistant. I wanted to just make sure that that was a hiring of an administrative assistant, not giving everybody...
But that hasn't, we don't know if we're gonna need that for sure, do we? We haven't talked about it.
No, we haven't talked about it, but that's what it's there for.
You might need Howard to get his in there.
Yeah, go ahead, Shelley.
Is this the time to, while we're still in general, is just to address a few specific things?
Sure.
On the budget part of it?
Sure.
Not just the summary?
Yeah, if you want, that's fine.
I figured while we're here. There's just two things, one of which is that the pension for the deputy treasurer does not match 10% of her salary.
It doesn't.
It looks like her old one is still in there.
Alright, where are you? Here it is. You're absolutely right. I thought we changed that.
I know I am.
Okay. I got it noted here.
Okay. The other thing is I'd like to ask the board, the money that he's got in his summary as a savings on roadwork, because those two things, the $10,000 went away and the $7,500 savings, and I'd like to add it back into road improvements, which would make our decision on, in this other line item, a little easier as far as, just a little background, when I first came into office, the township had a budget of $200,000 for roadwork, so we really were able to, you know, keep up, really help the county, and of course, it's just dwindled away, you know, as the budgets have changed, and it's just my suggestion, I would just like to see us be able to fund something instead of nitpicking some little project, is all. Yes?
I think that's a great idea. I will tell you, when we did the community survey townshipwide, then one of the biggest items that they had on there that they wanted to see the township do was road maintenance.
Yeah, I agree.
I, you know, like I said, I've seen a big budget where you could do, you know, some really good things, and I just feel like the township doesn't have a lot to give back to its people, and if, and everybody's complaining about roads nowadays because the county doesn't have enough money, the state, the federal government, I mean, you know, there's just not enough money to go around. So the more, you know, I know it's not a lot of money, but I think it would be a little more helpful than what we've got budgeted, so something to consider.
I think Shelley brings up a great point.
Absolutely.
I would encourage the board to look at increasing the funding on road improvements. I realize that we need to be cost-conscious, I totally understand that, but we need to look at our infrastructure. So, thank you, Shelley.
Anytime, Howard.
Do we want, do we want to add anything at this point in time, or does everyone want to think about it and get back to me? I mean, because obviously, we're kind of on a fast track here to get this budget approved by the end of June, so any input that we can get, and that's kinda what this meeting is all about too, is to, you know, we can make decisions right now.
I would say to put it back in.
Yeah, put it back in.
And just say what it looks like. Seventeen five.
We could hold on.
Seventy-five hundred.
And sell out a special thing.
Oh, you want the 10,000 as well?
Yes, the seventeen five that you have as a savings, I would like to see back in there.
Ah, okay, the whole seventeen five, gotcha. So we were using that other 10 to cover BSNA. But that's okay, that's alright. There's an 81,000 surplus out there, so, you know, keep that in mind too.
I agree. Put it there, note it, and we'll see if it works.
Work to be determined later, I mean, whatever.
Well, on our agenda is we have to decide our road projects, so that gives us a little bit of a wiggle room, you know, wiggle room to look at what they've asked or provided.
Okay. Any other suggestions, comments?
I just had one, and this had to do with the adjustments that you made. This is eight of 16, your draft allocations to department, and the note was deputy treasurer allocation to planning and building department, it was a decrease, so that's changing responsibilities, is that what that is? You're taking out $13,810?
Actually, because they're negatives, it's actually considered an increase.
An increase.
Yeah, and that has to do directly with the increase that the deputy treasurer is getting, so more of her salary is gonna be allocated out, basically, because it's a certain percentage. And again, that's something that's also kind of in flux a little bit too, because I'm not sure if she's going to be maintaining all of those duties.
Okay.
That's probably your decision, obviously, and then we need to have a solution as to...
One of the things Howard is helping look at, you know, time studies and try to figure out where some of these non-statutory duties should go or stay or...
Okay.
Right, and if it does come to...
Alright, we just have it noted.
Right, and basically, if it does come up to the point where she isn't doing any of those things any longer, obviously, that whole thing would go away.
Okay.
That allocation. Okay? Any other questions?
That just made me think of a question. If her salary increases, but yet more of her, the percentage of, the percentage of amount of time is that she spends on planning and zoning, doesn't change.
Correct.
But her salary increases.
Yeah, it's strictly just, her salary went up, nothing was changed on her time, roughly it's 50% now of her time is going towards planning, and then of that, 50, it's split 50-50 or 25% each goes to planning and zoning.
My problem is, I looked at this last column, which is just the year-to-date activity, and thought, that's a huge jump, but now I see.
Okay. Okay. Okay, if there's any other further questions, I'm gonna move on to the DDA fund. I'm sure all of you are aware that we have a DDA here within the township. They're probably not real happy these days, because they haven't been getting any money the last several years, and I don't know if all of you are familiar with how that actually works, but basically, when the DDA was put together back in the early 2000s, there was a base tax level that was established at that point of all the properties within that DDA. And the way the DDA makes money is, going forward, if those property values increase, the DDA gets money. If any time those values go below that base, they no longer get any money. Well, that's where we're at right now, and so that's why they have not received any money in the last several years. Now, they are continuing to try to do certain things around the township. This year is a very, very minimal budget. Probably the biggest thing that's on here is they are gonna provide flowers from Main Street at $1,500. Everything else is just real minor, 100 bucks for some miscellaneous supplies and 500 bucks for Farmer's Market, and that's really about all they're gonna be able to do this year. Yes, sir?
They get 100% of what the taxes go up. Is that right, or 50%?
Well, we have two different districts. We have 100% district and we have a 50% district.
Well, the 100% district is new construction, isn't it?
Yes.
It's 100% of new construction, 50% of current.
Okay, current, alright.
So, we haven't had any new, so they didn't get much 100%. So, okay. Thank you.
And they didn't get any 50% either, because it went down.
Yeah, yeah, there's a bunch of big negatives floating around out there. Moving on to the building department fund, basically, this is supposed to be a self-sustaining fund. It's based on the fees that are charged, and those fees should be adequate enough to cover the expenditures that are associated with the building department. And as you can see, overall, we're showing revenues of around 39.5, which is a slight increase of $300. Expenditures are 38, 190, and another small increase of $138, and we are gonna be adding to fund balance to just under $1,000. Nothing real significant as far as increases or decreases there, all the numbers are pretty much holding for the budget that we had this year, so that's really it. I mean, it seems to be holding its own right now, and unless anything else happens where we might have to go back and relook at the fee structure, if we start getting into a situation where we're spending more than we're bringing in, we're gonna wanna revisit that fee schedule and possibly tweak it upwards, so that we can keep this fund basically the way it is and with it sustaining itself. Any questions on the building department fund?
Definitely, I'm sure you have it.
Moving on to the building authority debt fund. Basically, this fund is out there just simply to track and capture the $3 million and the half-million dollar bond payments, along with the, you know, obviously, the principal payments, the interest payments, and any agent fees that are associated with those payments. Now, obviously, there are some significant decreases and some significant increases. All of those items have to do with the refinancing that was done last August. I can run through them if you want, but basically, that's all that's going on here. We're getting a huge interest savings because of that refinancing, and we had to make some really large entries as far as recording when the bond proceed was sold, you know, the old bond, new bond coming onboard, so there were some big entries floating around here. They all have a bottom line effect of zero, but none of those are gonna recur in 13-14, so that's why you're gonna see these large increases and decreases when you actually look at that particular budget. I know it sounds all real confusing. Anybody have any questions on that one? Yes, sir, Mr. Dockett?
Where's the 3.8 at?
That's in the next fund.
Okay. I see the three and I see the five.
Right.
Okay.
Okay? There's no further questions on that one. We move to the PSB debt fund, and this fund actually has two different purposes.
I see it.
It's, the first is to capture the $3.8 million bond payment that we have to pay, and that is actually covered by a millage that we can change annually to match the payment that we have to make. It's a very rare circumstance, but that's the way that the public voted it in, and...
Yeah, I know when they were voting in.
That's beside the point. But, so basically, that fund is there to capture those tax dollars and make the bond payment. That's the first part of this. The second part is they actually capture the expenditures on this building and the surrounding land that it's associated with, and basically then, those expenditures are dollars and make the bond payment. That's the first part of this. The second part is they actually capture the expenditures on this building and the surrounding land that it's associated with. And basically, then, those expenditures are then covered by the general fund, by the fire, and by police. Those three entities pay one-third each into the cost of running this building. So, in other words, this PSB Debt Fund is basically what I call a zero-balance fund. Revenues equal expenditures. There is no contribution to fund balance in this particular case. It's just capturing information and basically covering expenses by pulling money in from other funds. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Any other questions on that particular fund? Okay. Moving on to wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, we did finance that, refinance the three-point-eight.
Yes, we did. We refinanced the three million, the half a million, the three-point-eight, and then there was a smaller wastewater treatment bond that we also did as well.
Five hundred thousand, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Wastewater Treatment Plant. Overall, what we have here is a budget that is showing a deficit of roughly around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's primarily due to the culvert repair project and the purchase of a new truck. The culvert project, as you know, tonight, is just under a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and the new truck is roughly thirty-one thousand four hundred. Now, obviously, you have to approve that new truck, but we're putting it in the budget, and I'm sure Tim will be coming to you with a request for that purchase at some point in the future.
We already did it.
Oh, you already did?
At the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't know that. Sorry.
Did you pick it up yet? No.
Well, is this going to be purchased this year?
Next year.
Okay, so we're going to have to pay for it until next year. Okay.
We okayed it at the last meeting.
Okay. So, going through some of the significant decreases, all salaries are down roughly twenty thousand dollars, and that's primarily due to, we had a couple of people that have retired from there. They've been there for many years. They had higher salaries. We brought in people that were less experienced, obviously, had a lesser salary. So, that pretty much explains why we have a decrease in the salaries there. Collection System Annual Maintenance is projected to decrease ten thousand dollars, or roughly fifteen-point-four percent, because we're going to have less sludge hauling this year. Insurance and Bonds projected to decrease thirty-six hundred dollars. This is a difficult one to kind of explain, but there is a shifting in the premium a little bit, the way that it's divided up. And this one portion of the policy, I think it has to do with the property and liability insurance, that that actually came down quite a bit, and the wastewater treatment plant got the benefit of that decrease. So, that's what's really driving this decrease in the insurance and bonds for them. Let's see, moving on to Repairs and Maintenance is projected to decrease roughly ten thousand dollars. We've actually been budgeting a little higher in past years. We haven't been using that money, so just to kind of try to make the budget a little bit more palatable, we brought that down ten thousand dollars. Interest expense on the ninety-two bond, that's also one of the bonds that we did refinance, and that interest is also coming down.
You brought it from ten thousand to one thousand? Is that what you said? What'd you say?
For what, for repairs, maintenance?
Yeah, what'd you say?
We brought it down ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay. The interest expense, as mentioned, that was part of the refinancing that we did, so we are going to see a interest decrease there as well to the tune of twelve thousand eight hundred. Significant increases, we did give the superintendent an increase as well to the tune of three and a half percent. So, that's what's attributing to that increase. Hospitalization is projected to increase fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars, and there's a couple of different reasons for that. Number one, there was a three and a half percent increase in the cap level that the state has imposed on townships. So, that went into play. We had a retired single employee, was replaced by a family employee, so that had a big increase there. And then there was also, I'm also projecting a ten percent increase in dental and vision. And again, that number's kind of pulled out of the air to a certain extent. If somebody has a better feel for what that number should be, we can definitely bake it in here, but ten percent should give us a pretty decent coverage at this point. Depreciation expense is projected to increase fourteen thousand dollars, and that's primarily due to the culvert project and the new truck that's going to be purchased, or potentially purchased. No, I guess it is going to be purchased, is purchased, and so we're looking to see an increase in the depreciation for that particular, for those reasons. Again, the equipment is projected to increase roughly ninety-nine thousand dollars, and again, this all has to do with the same two things, the culvert project and the new truck, and it was offset by, in the budget that we had this year, twelve thirteen, we had a heated grit building project and an aeration drop project as well. And that's, those were in the budget, fifty thousand dollars, so that's why we're only seeing a ninety-nine thousand dollar increase. One thing I do want to mention, in this particular budget, the equipment that is purchased, and in this particular case here, the culvert project and the truck, they are one of the key reasons why this budget is showing a deficit situation. But when all is said and done, and the dust settles, so to speak, after the auditors get through with this, what they basically do is they take those two capital projects and they put them on our balance sheet. In other words, they pull them off our operating statement, and they depreciate them over periods of time. And I pretty much let the auditors choose those years or whatever, but typically, a truck probably be five years, the culvert's probably going to be at least twenty. It could be longer. I don't know. But, so they will essentially be pulled off of this operating statement, and so if you do that, that actually swings them from a deficit situation to a surplus situation, okay?
The old culvert lasted fifty years.
What's that, Wayne?
I said, "The old culvert lasted fifty years."
And that may be what life that they assign it, but I'm not the one who's going to make that decision. You know, that's an auditor decision. And they may assign fifty years to it. I just don't know what they're going to do at this point. But my whole point is that that hundred and forty thousand dollars is actually going to come off this operating statement, you know, before the end of the year and the audit is complete, you know. So, that's, I just want to make everyone aware of that particular point there.
And I think the appreciation values are basically addressed by what the state says you can take.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's not an auditor...
It's not an auditor saying, "Okay, it lasted twenty years." It's a little bit different than on a corporate level or on a business level.
Right. What Rick is saying is essentially, the depreciation comes back into the appropriation side, which essentially, instead of, and Tim is, if you look at it from a cash perspective, Tim is operating under a deficit, but if you look at it over time on an appropriation side, Tim is in a surplus. So, and Jackie, you're right, the state determines what the depreciation of an investment is.
Mm-hmm.
There is. Not to my knowledge.
There isn't what? I'm sorry.
There's no discretion.
Yeah. Okay, so everyone kind of clear on that? Because I just want to make sure that everyone understood that, that, you know, that hundred and twenty-five thousand that we were showing on the wastewater treatment plant as a deficit really won't be that when all is said and done. You know, we primarily put things in that capital outlay area so that they stand out, so that the auditors know that they're there, and then they can take the actions that they need to take, basically.
I have all the...
Sure.
After we have seen the capital improvement plan, was there any discussion with any of the department heads about starting to put stuff into their budget for that?
Nothing at all, because I didn't know what the board was doing with that plan at this point, so we didn't bake anything into this budget for anything to do with the capital plan. You know, if you guys wanted to look it over and make some suggestions as to what we should add in, that's fine. I have no problems with it. But we did not consider anything at this point.
Well, actually, all the departments have to figure that out, too, right?
Well, I mean, the plan, I mean, I did look over the plan. The plan kind of lays it out for you.
It's all in the plan.
Yeah, it's all in the plan, you know, by year. So, it's just a matter of whether the board wants to act upon it or not and provide the funds from someplace. I'm not sure where, because I don't know where you'd want to pull them from.
Right. I mean, we should hit it, get it started, but...
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I mean, whether this is the first year to do it or whether you wait another year and digest it a little bit more, I don't know. I mean, obviously, there are certain things that probably have more importance than others. So, it's just, I really think it really comes down to the board as to what they really want to do with this plan and how they want to execute it.
Well, really, if you have something that's not going to be paid out, let's say, in five years, you would escrow, at least escrow that money towards that.
Yeah, you could literally start setting money aside. You know, it would be an expenditure to like a capital outlay fund, and you would just make a contribution to that particular fund, and then in five years, if you set aside the right amount of money, then the money's sitting there waiting.
There, in the beginning, in the capital improvement plan, it actually states options for funding for any of those items, so you have things to choose from.
Sure, exactly. Now, like some of the larger things, like Mr. Docket was saying about the fire engine and stuff like that, I don't know if you could possibly save that kind of money or not, you know. So, it may be something where you'd have to go out and get a loan or get a bond for it or something.
Or get grants for it.
Possibly grants, too. Yes, exactly, exactly. So, all of those things need to be explored and find out what's the best way to basically handle some of these large purchases that are down the road. Moving on to District Number Five, the Seven Mile Sewer Fund. This is an active special assessment district, and basically, all that means is that this fund is sitting here. It's collecting the SAD interests, the special assessment district interests that we're earning on the payments that the residents are making that are in that district. And that's really all that's going on in this fund. It's simply capturing those dollars, and we do depreciate the equipment that's associated with that particular area, so that's the only expense item that you'll see on that particular operating statement. Any questions on that one? Yes, sir?
Ah, yes, I don't want to take time tonight, but I'm in that district. I paid cash. Another, one other person, there was about twenty of us in the district, one other paid fifty thousand dollars cash. The other ones are all paying on their taxes.
Sure.
But I believe that this should be adjusted somewhat for us that paid cash. I think just, so who handles it right now? Who's in charge of this?
I mean, I provide the information when somebody calls in, but am I the right person? Probably not.
Who is?
I don't know, to tell you the truth. I really don't know.
Maybe I'll try to find out. Thank you very much.
Moving on to District Number Three, which is the Horseshoe Lake Sewer Fund. This is basically an inactive special assessment district. It's been completely paid for, but there is a balance here of, God, it's hundreds of thousands, seven, eight hundred thousand, somewhere in that range. And basically, we maintain that balance there for repairs that might be coming up in that area. We do earn a little bit of interest in there, and we do depreciate some equipment in there. And then one of the other things that's nice about it, because it is a inactive special assessment district, wastewater treatment plant can actually charge repairs and things that are specific to that district to that district. So, we have budgeted various expenditures for repairs and maintenance and some supplies, and I think we're going to push some labor in there this particular year. So, that's one of the nice things about that one, is that it does give a little bit of relief to the actual wastewater treatment plant budget, because we can push some of the expenditures to this.
But someday, it might be a million dollars to replace a sewer, so that's why...
Correct.
That's why it's like that, yeah. There will be continuing money put in there, right?
Yes.
No.
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 No, what did he say?
Wayne, there will not be continuing money put in that district.
No, you're right. There's no money on there.
These sewer district funds are primarily, are only for the purpose of the original infrastructure.
Only that?
For the purpose of the original infrastructure.
Yeah, well, I know, but...
Yeah. The money that you're paying is going into the wastewater treatment fund. When you pay your rates...
How does this fund, how does the money get in here, then?
The money was originally came in here when the infrastructure was assessed.
Okay, so all they're getting is interest.
Right.
So, that's my question. How did this fund get so much extra money? Why wasn't it refunded? Do you have any idea?
That's a question that, number one, were actually, that I asked, and from an accounting perspective, one of the things that we need to look at is where do we have flexibility of funds? So, Rick has indicated, just sort of generally indicated, we take some repairs and maintenance out of this fund. Right now, we're, I'm looking with the auditor to check to see what other flexibility we have with those funds, and Shelley, to your point, if there is any increases, where do those, or not increases, but excess funds, where do those excess funds go over time? And that'll be also a conversation that we'll have with Tim in terms of what's the needs of the district, you know, in the next five or ten or twenty years. So, we're going to work with the auditor on that, on what our flexibility is. Does that make sense?
You know, we can take the money out of that fund and put it somewhere else?
It's a question I asked.
Okay, we always said that you couldn't. I mean, the township's always said they couldn't, but I don't know what the answer is either.
I'd like to, I asked for some clarification.
It's not the only sewer fund that's got a lot of money in it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I didn't find it surprising.
The general law around sewer funds and around any special assessment fund is that expenditures, the general law is expenditures have to be directly related to the fee that was assessed. So, if we use any of those dollars, it would, at a minimum, have to be directly related to the Horseshoe Lake Sewer Fund.
Yeah, we can't borrow a fire truck.
That's correct.
Right, yeah.
But we would, but what we are investigating is, because this is an inactive fund, where do we go from here, given that there's six, seven, or eight hundred thousand dollars left over in fund balance?
I don't think you can borrow it either.
Okay. Are we all set on that one for right now? Okay, then moving on to the very last one, the North Territorial Sewer District. Very similar to the Seven Mile Sewer District. It is an active special assessment district. So, again, the only thing that's coming out of here is, I guess we do have a small bond payment that's coming out of here as well, but we do earn the SAD interest, and then we have depreciation that goes against this fund as well. But other than that, that's really about the only activity that comes out of that particular sewer fund. And with that, that completes the budget update. Are there any other questions?
I'd like to thank you very much, Rick, for all the work you did and trying to get it through my thick head. Thank you.
No problem.
You've done a wonderful job on it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, Joan. I'm not sure if this is something that you can answer or not, but in the manager's report, not the manager's report, I'm sorry, the Fire Department's report, Mr. Wagner indicated that we lost, we couldn't get funding for Fire Station Number Two to put in the ambulance service in there because of Obamacare and because of the sequester. Anything going on in 2014 because of any kind of programs through the federal government that'll affect our budget?
I don't know the answer to that question, because that's the first I've even heard that Bill was even trying to do that.
Yeah.
You know, so that's something he has kept from me, so I wasn't even aware that he was trying that.
Yeah, the sequester has to do with the decrease in Medicare. So, that also decreases what Medicare will start paying on emergency ambulance services, that type of thing.
Okay. That's something that the Democrats think.
Anyone else have anything? All right, thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
You know, very helpful, being first time around. I can actually understand this huge budget.
That's my whole town. It's something that you can understand.
Thank you.
Great report.
A little overwhelming.
Great report.
I'll trade seats with you.
Okay, you guys, can we switch things up a little bit? We have a person in the audience that's been waiting since our meeting started for a very quick item on our agenda, which is number nine. And if you wouldn't mind, can we jump that right up to three A? Or just, let's just take care of nine.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
Yeah, we'll just drop down and take care of nine.
You're dropping down. Number nine, Request to Use Seventy-Five Barker Road for Outdoor Concert. Manning.
I will make a motion to allow Lamaco, Lamacoo, Lamaco, to use Seventy-Five Barker Road for Summerfest 2013 concert on Saturday, July thirteenth, 2013.
Manning motion, chick supported. Any discussion? Those in favor? Oops, I see ya.
Neither one of the police or fires here, but my question, maybe the manager can answer. Is there any extra cost to the fire or police department? Does anyone know for this project?
Madam Supervisor and Board, thanks for having me. My name is Alan Smith. I did meet with Bill. We have discussed this, and I'm keeping abreast on how things go. We don't really sell tickets. It's going to be free. He's anticipating only a problem if we go over a hundred, and that'd be a nice problem to have. I'd like to have a hundred new people in town, so, yeah. We have addressed it, though.
We don't see any cost to the fire.
No, no, other than the fact that I don't know if my letter, I requested using the twenty-amp circuit at the building, but other than that, no. No cost to the township.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're jumping back up, and this would be number four, the rescheduling for the public hearing for the sewer district.
Yes, we, at the last meeting, agreed to have a public hearing for this district today, but we ran into the time constraints that we have to publish things and notify people, so I'm just, it's a revised resolution, exactly like we approved last month with the date change out to May twenty-eighth, 2013. So, I will make a motion to approve the revised Nurseville Township Resolution thirteen dash four eight nine to change the public hearing date to May twenty-eighth, 2013.
I'll support. Manning motion, auto-supported. Any discussion?
Shelley, on May, do we have any money in escrow? Who is paying for the engineering work on this so far? The township?
We haven't been charged for the engineering work yet.
I know, but they've done it, and we maybe didn't get a bill, but my question is, what happens if the deal falls apart? You know, they don't go through with it. If this was not a sewer project, say it was Kmart, we would have money in escrow to cover the engineering. So, that's my question. Do we have any money in escrow for it?
Actually, we did have, we did have a thing. Yeah, you can, we did have an agreement that they funded the money for the engineering services in the beginning.
That's correct. The township did pay Tetra Tech a small fee. It was on twenty-two, twenty-five hundred dollars.
They agreed, they agreed?
About a year and a half ago. You agreed, the... You agreed, it was put in escrow, the property owners paid for it.
Yes.
So we have 25?
We did get money to pay for that bill.
We haven't received a bill, but would our bill be more than 25 at this time, or?
I believe that's been paid.
Yeah.
Building paid.
That bill was, it was paid to him after we collected the money from the...
You paid it to them?
Yes. We paid him for their contract work that we approved.
So have you run over over 25?
I have only put in a handful of hours beyond that. I have no intention to charge the township for that.
Okay, well, that's my question. I just want to make sure that we don't run up, you know, we've had, we've been sued and all that over.
Oh.
That before, where on the road project, when, you know, the engineers kept going and going and, you know...
You have accrued no liability with me.
So, okay, that's what's my question.
And we should know, as of this public hearing, whether it'll continue to be a project or if it falls apart, based on what we hear from people.
If it falls apart, then hopefully we won't be billed for two months. Okay, that's my question. Because I believe we should have money in escrow for any of these. And I did talk to the new manager about that, and he said where they lived, where he worked, excuse me, they did not get involved. They had the, they have the project person go right to the engineer and pay. In other words, the money don't come through the township. And I like that idea, because we've had, we've been burnt a few times. Matter of fact, we got three or four that's not paid right now, don't we?
For the sewer?
For work that was done that was not paid.
Mr. Dockett?
If I may just clarify, what you're talking about is engineering fees on development. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know that that would be related to the sewer district.
No, I know, but I just said it, I chatted with you about that.
Yes.
And you came up with a pretty good idea, I thought.
Yeah, thank you.
Where the township's not going to be involved in it.
Right.
Just hand them directly over to the engineer. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I think we were, I'm sorry.
I apologize, yeah. If I may just make a suggestion, one of the things that was suggested to me, and I think it's a good comment, is I guess you have an option of, instead of doing the public, you will obviously statutorily have to have a public hearing, open it up for a public hearing, open for a couple of comments, and then close public hearing. I didn't know if you guys wanted to have a community meeting, you know, where we can address some of these issues, and it wouldn't be at the board meeting, if you will. Shelley, I don't know if that's something that you think might be of value, or, again, I'm so new here that it's hard for me to say.
I mean, we're talking like 20 parcels that are affected.
Okay.
We did actually, Brian and I actually did have an informational meeting when we were first, you know, trying to get this rolling. And, you know, they brought up some good points. I don't know, actually, as soon as I can, I'm going to dump this on you anyways, but...
Okay, well, then my recommendation would be... Thank you. My recommendation, Brian, unless you feel differently, my recommendation would be to set, let's set a community meeting, let's get it advertised to the public, so that we can hear any issues and address any, address any issues that people have, get all the information out there, so that when we come back for a statutory public hearing, we have already addressed the issues, if any residents have them. And at that point, you know, if they still feel like they want to remonstrate, they can come in and remonstrate, but we'll get to the point where it'll be a quicker process on the public hearing side.
I'm happy to help.
Is that something that you think would be valuable?
Your bond attorney suggested that.
Okay.
And I have done that that way in other communities, and it's worked well.
Okay, fantastic. Let's do that, then.
I will withdraw my motion, because we will not need a public hearing on May 28th.
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
All right.
You can call me that in the office, too.
He didn't hear you, he was talking.
Okay, so on to our next item of business, it would be number five, road projects for 2013. Manning.
Well, they're in front of you. This is, you know, what the road commission is suggesting.
So in our budget, it appears that we have 28, 38,000 allocated.
Yeah, so about 55.
And so we put back the 17.5.
Yeah.
So we have 55.5. No, I think this 200, 227,000 is our share. Is that correct?
227,688.
Is the...
Well, this is if we did all of these projects.
Right. That's if we did all of them, that would be our share.
Are these listed in a priority?
No.
Okay.
They just kind of cruise the roads, they give you, you know, give you an idea. Obviously, 55 doesn't get us very far either, it's still going to be a dirt road project, you know, instead of a... But I guess we just have to, it seems like...
What are we voting on? How much of this are we voting on?
Well...
Are we voting on...
Well, we have to decide based on what money we have. We do have almost $24,000 matching, so, you know, whatever these costs are, you can take the 24 off of it, and then the balance is our cost.
When we had Six Mile done, we did the dust control and Township-wide limestone, it made a huge difference in the road. That was what, five, over five years ago?
Mm-hmm.
And it's still good, so...
Yeah, limestone is great, but it's...
Makes a big difference.
My little old sub was one of the first ones that they did, but it's now so, I mean, you know, between scraping the roads and stuff, it just dislodges all of that eventually.
My thought is, instead of picking a road to do, if we could do more roads in the township, or something to them to improve them, that would be the better way to go, because then we're helping everybody.
So like this Township-wide limestone as opposed to one of the individuals? The bad thing is, some of these dirt roads, they, I mean, they need to be totally reworked.
We usually do the brine, don't we?
We do, and that's not even part of the 55 we're talking about, that's a...
We usually okay the brine.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we have to take the 28,000 off and the what?
Yeah, I mean, don't, we're going to approve that, and that's, that was a separate line item, so we still have 55 to work with.
So like, number four, Eight Mile, Spencer did Rushdon, that is a dirt road. Number five, Six Mile, Dixboro, Earhart is a dirt road.
Yeah, they're all dirt, actually.
Well, then, okay, and then Earhart, Five Mile to North Key is also dirt. Okay.
I don't know, maybe we...
And I was going to make mention, one of the problems on Six Mile, the main problem on Six Mile that caused most of the problem was because there was no ditching on Six Mile.
They said ditching is very...
They did do it, in addition to the limestoney.
Right.
It was, yeah, and that is what had, has maintained that road.
Well, because that would flood, right? Wasn't it flooding?
Well, it would be, do more than flood.
The road commission truck got stuck on Six Mile. I think the emergency vehicle, it wasn't met.
Yeah, when I met with the road commission individually, they said how important the ditching is, and, you know, we may keep that one as a top priority, because that does affect, you know, kind of everywhere. It's not necessarily location-driven yet.
Right. So actually, with our matching, we could actually almost do the Township-wide limestone and the Township-wide ditching.
And the dust control?
Yeah, we don't have, yeah, we don't have to include the dust control in the 55, because if you look back in the budget, he had it separately, he had the dust control in a different line item than the road.
Two and three comes in 65, not 55.
Yeah, and then you can, you take off 25, approximately 25,000, because that's our matching fund amount. Well, actually, no. I don't know what this drainage match means.
I don't know either. But, oh, I know.
Who drew this up?
It's the lead matches right there.
This is from the road commission. Oh, okay. It was just a sample. This is what we'll sign off on, but it will only contain whatever we choose to write, to do.
Right. When does this have to be decided, then?
Well, today.
Okay.
They need to, they need to know by tomorrow, I think it was.
I'm sorry, on number two, it says, "Work to include the application of a 23A limestone surface with associated dust control." Does that mean the dust control is included with the Township-wide limestone?
Yes.
Okay, so we got dust control with number two anyway.
Well...
Or no?
I think it's going to be dust control on, that's a good point. You know what, I think that does need to be clarified. You know, when they, generally, when you talk about dust control on a project, you're talking about, you're talking about dust control on the construction, not dust control on a permanent basis. You're talking about, you know, more dust control related to how the environmental laws...
We're talking about brine, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, one is brine, but two is saying, you know, includes dust control, but I think that, I'm with you on that, Howard, that it's dust control of when they're dropping the limestone.
That's right, not dust control over time.
It's, I don't, I think it's a totally separate entity than the two applications that we're going to have them do. So if we went with the limestone and the ditching, our cost would be 41,000, approximately, after I took away the matching funds. I still think that's a good contribution.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you know...
It helps a lot of people in a lot of our roads, because we mostly have dirt roads anyway.
Okay, well, I think we're all new to this, so you got any direction of, you know, any thoughts, or...
Well, I was just waiting to see if anybody had any other opinions about what they'd like to spend the money on.
So, help me understand, will they be taking all this out, or is only a portion of this, of these matching funds being taken out?
We will get the whole, we will get the whole conventional match of 23873.
Okay.
Because we're going to spend at least twice that amount.
Okay.
I am not positive what the drainage match means. If we had them do the ditching, you know, I'm not sure if that's where that kind of thing applies, because when I read drainage, I'm, well, that's what it's doing, isn't it, is draining?
Right.
Or helping the...
Here's what I would suggest, if I...
It is, and then it's cleaning out the side of the, you know, just make a place for the water to go.
Let me make a suggestion, and if I may. Why don't I clarify tomorrow morning on the matching funds, and how much the percentages and cost of the matching funds will be. Why don't we create what our priorities are, and we can at least get to the road commission what our priorities are, we'll create, you know, if, let's say, let's, I think Shelley's on the right track, we've got, what, about 40, 50,000 we're looking at here, let's create what our one, two, three priorities are, and then we'll take it back to the next board meeting in two weeks for an official vote. We can get the road commission started on what those priorities are going to be, and I can give them direction on essentially what the board is going to decide.
Well...
Why don't we just vote on one, two, three?
Yes. My opinion is that, that we just say that's what we want done, and if we...
And we can always unvote, I mean, we can always not do it, if we find out that the money's not right, or something like that.
If, to just make the motion to approve them, and if we don't spend the whole 55, that's, so be it. I mean, if we get both of those credits.
Or if we're over...
It's still not enough money left over to take care of any of these other...
And if he finds out that we're out of line somehow on money, then we have to scratch something.
Agreed.
Right. But I think we'll be actually paying less than we were thinking, so...
I'm not making the motion, but I will.
Okay, I will then. I'll make a motion to authorize the road commission to do the 2013 dust control, Township-wide limestone at the cost of 50,000, the Township-wide ditching at the cost of 15,000, and using our matching funds. Like, is that enough?
Manning motion, chick supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
We'll still confirm the matching, but...
Okay, on to number six, the resolution for the road closure for the Fourth of July Parade.
Okay, just a little background, when the entities ask for road closures for things, such as the Fourth of July Parade and the fireworks, the road commission requires the local municipality to assign someone to be the designee for the township board, basically, and so it's usually, you know, we're naming somebody in these resolutions. So it's kind of a, it's kind of just a housekeeping thing that we have to do for them to be able to ask for road closures. So, having said that, does anybody have any questions about these?
Somebody on the board has to be, or George Brown?
No, see, yeah, we're appointing him, he will file the paperwork with the road commission to have the road closed. So we're basically, and then what happens is, after we approve these, I send them to the road commission, so they have them on file when they ask for the road closure.
George has been through this many times.
Yeah, exactly.
And maybe we want to mention to everyone listening that the parade route is changing this year.
Yes.
And it is starting at, is it starting at the elementary school then?
It's at Timbercrest, which is just before the, Timbercrest and Barker.
Right.
And coming down to Main Street, and then down to the Public Safety Building.
Going east to Main Street.
Heading east on, yeah.
East to Main.
And Solva on Main.
Correct.
Right.
To where?
To the, here, to the Public Safety Building. I will make a motion to approve the resolution regarding temporary road closure for the Whitmore Lake Kiwanis, appointing George Brown as the designee.
Manning motion, Thomas supported. And you need a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Thomas?
Yes.
Otto?
Questions.
Yes. Manning, yes.
Question.
Engstrom?
All right, Dockett would like me to back up, I did not ask if anyone had any thoughts or questions.
I, I would like to know, I would like to say that this is a nonprofit outfit, and if there is extra, I always ask if there's extra costs for police and fire, but I think this is part of our contribution to the township people, so I will support it.
Thank you, Wayne. Do you need to start over on the roll call vote?
No, I'll just start with you and go on.
Okay.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bron?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is for the Whitmore Lake Fourth of July Committee, for they closed the road between North Main and Barker while the fireworks are being shot off. So I will make a motion to approve the resolution regarding a temporary road closure requested by the Whitmore Lake Fourth of July Committee, appointing Patrick Hool of the Whitmore Lake Fourth of July Committee as the designee.
Manning motion, Thomas supported.
Any discussion?
This is also a nonprofit organization, which the township will contribute to our police and fire, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
I mean, if it was somebody selling, you know, if they had vendors selling things, or selling parking, then I believe they should give something to the police and fire, but these are nonprofits.
I like the way you think. Okay, could we start, roll call?
Chick?
Yes.
Bron?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Manning, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we kind of did six and seven together. On to number eight, the civic event...
Sorry, I just took over.
No problem. Uh, civic event permit request for the Fourth of July Committee.
Again, they always, um, require or file for a permit, um, even though they really don't have one specific spot that, that people congregate anymore. Bill has gone over this and has met with the committee already, so he doesn't have any issues. I had a few minor things that I've already talked to the, to Patrick about. He will begin to take care of them. So I will make a motion to approve the civic event application from the Whitmore Lake Fourth of July Committee for fireworks dated 6/29/2013 with a rain date of 6/30/2013.
Manning motion, Chick supported. Any discussion?
It's a nonprofit, I will support it.
Thank you, Wayne. Can we, um, so, no discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
We don't have that roll call.
Not for that?
Not on that.
Uh, we are on to number 10, request to pay for the damage due to the tree, the fence, and the work to a gentleman who cut that tree up.
This, this actually has been going on for a couple of years. They've, they've complained about that tree for a while. I actually, at one point, had bids from tree companies to cut it down, and the two that went there came back and said they couldn't figure out what tree they were talking about. Needless to say, there obviously was a tree that finally fell. So at this point, because it was on township property, they're asking for, you know, reimbursement for costs that they had. Yep.
Well, and, excuse me, but in, uh, Wagner's report, he, he mentions this, and it sounds like he thinks that we should pay it and be, and be done with it.
Correct.
My question is, and I don't wa, I don't want to turn it into insurance company, little bills, and then have our, you know...
No, we would never...
So my question is, what about if we turn it in to insurance company, or don't we, or don't, is it best for us just to pay to...
It's just to pay. We probably have a thousand dollar deductible anyways, so...
Okay, I'll support it.
All right. Make a motion to approve the payment to Jade Fence for $450, and also to Anthony Haas for $120.
I support.
Has the fence been put up, Shelley?
Has the fence been put up?
Has it been put up?
I do not know. I don't know if Bill...
The, the, the tree is down, the fence is, uh, the fence has not been put up. The, you're approving this before the, before the, before the infrastructure's put in.
Okay, well, are we, would we be under any obligation for the main, the fence company had insurance or something like that, or no?
No.
We don't, we don't...
It's, it's her property. Basically, what we'll do is just pay this bill.
Okay, very good.
All right, so, uh, Engstrom motioned, Otto is the second. Any discussion? Those in, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Uh, motion passes. On to number 11, the bids for the 2003, 2013 lawn mowing service.
Uh, J&amp;M Landscaping is who we currently have. We've had them for several years, maybe three now. They also have done our snow removal the last couple of years. I have zero complaints with them. They're very, um, willing to do whatever we ask of them. I'll make a motion to approve J&amp;M Landscaping as our 2013 lawn cutting provider, or, I'm going to say landscaping provider also because they are doing some of that.
They're doing bed maintenance, right?
Yep.
What's the INS? It says no for...
Insurance.
Right, they're saying no, they do not have insurance?
Well, he, he did not provide it with the bid, which, well, it's requested, you know, they're supposed to, but I have his insurance on file already, which is still good.
Okay.
All right, oh, Dockett?
Uh, has anybody cut the grass this year? Has the grass been cut at this location, or?
I think so, yes.
Who, who's cut it?
He cut it.
Why? Okay, well, he's not under, on the contract.
That's right, but I'm, I think Bill called and asked him to come and do it, which he has done before when we do this late.
Okay, I, uh, I want to protest, and I'm not voting on this because we should have four or five bids.
We can't force people to bid.
And I'm, well, I don't know how, I don't know where we get these bids from, but, uh, I, in years past, we've had four, five, six bidders. Now we got two bids, and I, I, I would like to see Howard take this over from now on.
And he will.
Along with the snow plowing, and let him, uh, put it out and see where, what we can do on it.
I think Howard did a fine job on doing that.
You better have 10 bids next year.
Yes, ma'am. Marking it in the calendar. Yes, ma'am. We'll do our best, Wayne.
I will just say, being on an association, this is about the amount of bids that you get, because you go through so many lawn mowing services and snow removal services, and sometimes they don't last, and...
Unless you go out and listen to them.
Exactly.
I mean, we've had years where we had six or seven, but, um, they're all so high. They, what, now they say way better.
Yeah.
So...
Well, it's all we got right now, so...
That's what we got.
Do you have a motion on the table?
I did.
You did? Did someone's motion?
No seconded.
I'm sorry, supported. Uh, we were at discussion, correct? Um, okay. Anyone, Wayne? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Six, one. Who supported that, Kathy or Janet? I can't remember.
Okay, on to number 12, the bills. Wayne?
Bill. Bill. Okay, bills paid. I notice on here that we have J&amp;M Landscaping for $6,555, and I, I've talked with the township manager today, and I ask that maybe this doesn't get paid in total, or unless someone has gone out and checked to see about, in the past, this guy's been pretty good, but in the past, we've had people push bumper blocks all the way down the hill, whatever, broken sidewalks, broken curb. I would, I would like to, uh, have, I would like to have, uh, the township manager check that out and make sure that we don't have any damages before we pay this, or if we're going to pay it, hold 10% or something until it is inspected.
I have no issues doing the inspection. If the board wants to authorize me to go ahead and pay the bill once, uh, once it passes inspection, I'd be happy to do that, Wayne, and take on that responsibility.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That sounds great.
Thank you. And, uh, on, uh, on page two, down almost halfway, land acquisition, is that the lock, Shelley? 600?
Which, paid or open?
Paid, page two, almost halfway down. Wasna County Treasurer Land Acquisition, $660 and $49.10. I don't know what that's for.
Those were the remaining taxes that were owed on those pieces of property that we got.
Okay. So it was a total of $709. Okay. Uh, thank you, I thought that's probably what it was. Uh, Office of Justice Program, what is, uh, $7,500, that's on page four, one, two, down about, uh, six or seven, uh, it's under miscellaneous, $7,500 for, for Justice Program. What is that?
I'm not sure. That's from the police department.
It's under law enforcement, they're not here. Okay, they, they're not here, so. I had another one for the police and fire, it was, uh, $228 for dirt sport. I mean, don't we have anybody that's on probation that, that has to do, uh...
Community service?
Yeah, I mean, you know, 228 bucks is 228 bucks, and I think we have a lovely place down here in the fire department.
That's right.
Where we can wash these cars up a little bit, so I think the police department is, is throwing their money away.
Wayne, I think they, they use, uh, community service people to wash cars. I just think it's whenever they're available.
Well, I don't think they've been available for months, according to this. Uh, Triangle Towing, does anybody know what that was all about? It was a medical rescue. Does anybody know why they called Triangle Towing for $120? PNC Bank Repair and Maintenance, page 10, down a room more than half, 206 bucks. Is that like a, for credit? I mean, I wish if these were credit cards, that we'd put CC afterwards or something. I mean, uh, why is it under repair and maintenance for PNC Bank? $206.34.
Because one of the charges on the credit card was a repair and maintenance fee.
Well, can't, can't we put a credit card on here? I mean, would it be that much trouble to, to, uh, put down what it's for? And, uh, I would like to have our township manager check on these credit cards and see who's got them and, and if they still need them.
We'll, we'll look at a credit card policy.
Of course, we still need them. We have a credit card policy.
We do?
Yes, we do.
But, but a lot of people had them that...
My understanding is, Wayne, we only have two credit cards floating around.
How many?
Two.
Four, there's four.
Four? Okay.
No one asked me.
My apologies. No, absolutely, you're right.
Hey, thank you. That's it, on the bills.
Nothing on the open bills?
Huh?
These, this, this page, these paid, yeah, which you've already seen last meeting at the open bills. You don't have any questions on the open ones?
No, because, do you, do you pay the open ones? Do you pay the open ones before we, uh, it seems like you did, because it was like $10,000?
These were on the open report last month.
I know. I can, I understand.
We were just...
No, I didn't ask about the ones last month. I asked about the paid ones. But there was around $10,000 worth of, uh, uh, J&amp;M service on the unpaid ones, and now there's only 6,500. What happened?
Well, we didn't have a whole lot of snow and ice and...
Well, somebody must have paid some, no, but somebody must have paid some of the bills if they, if they, you must have paid some of the bills without authorization, or you may have, excuse me.
We would never do that.
Well, uh, I don't know. And I'd like to have the township people know that from 4/9/13 to 5/9/13, it costs the taxpayers 255,000, $261.25 this month to run your township. Thank you. And I already, uh, you want to pass that? Or what? Want to pass the minutes? I mean, the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'll support motion, uh, Manning motioned, Engstrom supported. Any discussion?
I don't have a discussion, I have a question for Shelley, though. The BSNA program that we were talking about earlier, will that allow you to put more comments on those reports so that you can actually have more detail on what they are?
If you look at the open, it does tell you more. I've actually talked to Julie about this, because it tells you under this column, which is titled invoice description, what, it shows what we put in when we put a check in. Um, but the paid ones, we can't find something that'll give us that much information.
She's saying on the new stuff, will you be able to do?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know anything about the new stuff, but I'm just talking about the, the current reports that we're able to do.
I know they're clicking on this one, wondering if anyone else...
I don't know, because I haven't really seen anything about that, the new stuff, so...
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. On to number 13.
The others are already, I already...
You already did others?
Yeah.
Okay, so number 14, OH...
Well, we need to vote on it.
Oh.
Approve these.
Approve the others.
What do you mean, you already did these?
Excuse me?
You already asked your question?
Yeah, because they wanted to leave.
Okay.
So, and it was on there, it was, it was in there.
But we do have to do the consent. Well, we do need to approve them.
Right.
It was, it was in their, their report.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent items for payment. Yeah, well, I will make a motion to approve the request for in-service training for the police department and the request for continuing education from the accessory.
I support.
Manning motioned, Otto supported. Any discussion? Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Mr. Dockett, we're on number four, for you, 14 for you.
Okay, real quick, at the last meeting, uh, not the, not the special meeting, but the last meeting, we had OHM came, and they had one, two, three, four, five, six items that they gave a presentation on, I would call it, a call to the public. When I tried to ask questions, the supervisor told me that I couldn't ask any questions that, uh, and since then, she told me she had some calls about me, about me, uh, trying to ask questions about it. So my question...
Doing call to public.
Huh?
Doing the call to public.
Doing, doing the call to public, that's right. So my comment is, I don't believe we should have, if you read, if you read what it says in the minutes here, I mean, if you read what it says on our agenda, excuse me, on the agenda, number one, it says call to the public, uh, is the agenda item twice during the meeting, it is available so that citizens, citizens may address. Number five, call to the public, chances for citizens to ask questions. It doesn't say that these vendors that we pay tens of thousands of dollars to, to come in here and, and give their report and walk away without questions asked. So I don't believe they should have been on the, I think they should have been on the agenda, and I would hope that, uh, that I would get some support on that.
I agree with you, Wayne.
Okay, thank you. That's it, I have nothing else.
Wayne, I agree with you. They, they probably should have been on the agenda so we could have a better open forum with them.
Thank you very much.
Anyone have anything else? You done with 14?
Yeah, I'm done with 14, but I still got some more to say.
Okay, well, yeah, we got, we got board member comments coming up.
That's right.
Hold on. Okay, uh, second call to public. Anyone? All right, thank you. Uh, board member comments, does anyone have anything? Let's go in our line, I guess. Janet?
I think we took a few giant steps forward so far this year with bringing Howard on.